All right, at this time, we're gonna go into an update from Wycomico County Health Department, Division of Environmental Health. We should have Ms. Brewster and Mr. Dan Williams.
Good morning.
Good morning again.
Good morning. I was wondering why you were still hanging out?
Ah, she wears many hats.
She does.
Yes, she does.
She's not wearing that Somerset County hat anymore, though, are you?
No, sir, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for...
Ms. Hurley is providing you all with some graphs on performance for the Wycomico County Environmental Health Division.
Mm-hmm.
I'm not gonna go over each and every graph that you're looking at. I do want to give you an overall summary of the increase in applications that we are seeing across the county. We have seen an increase of 48 percent in our building permits, a decrease in land evaluations, which I'm sure Dan is a little bit grateful for right now because they are very, very time-consuming. New construction permits are up 91 percent. So, you know, there are things occurring in the county. Replacement systems are up 22 percent, which is of concern because that means that we've got failing issues, failing septic issues, and then a 36 percent decline in tank-only permits in the county, and that was from 2019 to 2020. I will refer you to the last couple of pages. We wanted to provide you with the average number of days to completion from January to June because council had been concerned about the completion times. And then we also have completion times for July and August of this year. You will see that the completion times are generally declining, which is a good thing. I will tell you that when we see an increase, sometimes that can be related to weather because you don't want us out there trying to perk a piece of property in the rain, or just issues with the type of system having to go through approval with Maryland Department of the Environment. So, I will turn it over to Dan if he has any other questions or comments, and then, you know, if you all have questions or concerns, we can certainly address them.
The only thing I'd like to report is that when we take a snapshot of July and August of '21, in '20, I'm sorry, in 2019, we had 64 applications completed in a time period. In '20, we had 68. In '21, we've had 104. So, our numbers are going up. We're getting them completed better now. Apologize for the throat.
Ms. Brewster, can you talk about, a little bit about, the stages of the approval process? I did not realize what all, who all needed to sign off on, even just a simple addition to your, a screening in your porch, how that approval process works.
I'm gonna let Dan address that.
We are one of several agencies that would sign off. What we're looking at with porches and handicap ramps and things like that is that there's no intrusion or interference with the recovery area for a septic system. You know, if you build your porch where we were going to put a future septic system, now that becomes a problem, particularly on older properties, as I had mentioned last time I was here. It's hard to get repairs on the smaller lots. So, imagine if I have a 20,000-square-foot lot, and now I put a, let's say, a 2,000-foot addition on, or no, say, a 1,000-foot addition. I've taken 1,000 feet away from where a drain field might go for a new tank. So, we're one of several agencies. So, when we say, "Yeah, it's okay, does not interfere with the SRA sewage recovery area," then it goes to the other agencies, the building department, it goes to planning and zoning, you know, roads and those different things.
So, if someone brings in plans to build a ramp, and they would first submit it to planning and zoning, planning and zoning then distributes it to the agencies, or they send it to you, and then you distribute?
They would, they do the comment, and then they would distribute, but we also comment, we comment and send our comments back to them, so that they have them. And, you know, handicap ramps and those, I'll talk about that for a second. That's normally a fairly easy process unless we have, you know, some of the older ones, we had one just the other day. They were building the handicap ramp, and they forgot or did not take into consideration that the existing septic tank had been put five feet from the foundation of the house, which puts it right underneath the handicap ramp. They were able to create like a floating ramp, so if we ever need access to it, we can move it, you know, to do it. So, we did a workaround. So, yes, ma'am.
Any more questions, comments? All right. Mr. Cannon?
Yeah. Do you have this in like a PDF that you could send to us?
Yes.
That'd be great. I don't know which page to refer you to. I guess it would be the one that has August 2021 at the top of it, and it's just the varying days. So, I'm guessing that replacements or tank-only is, if you're gonna attempt to do that, you're looking at two months regardless. Is that right?
Depending on, yes, it can be up to that time. Because what we have to take in consideration also is, even though it says tank-only, we still wanna evaluate the drain field just to make sure there's no problems with it. But if it is a tank-only, that's really, really correct.
And replacements, about two months also, right? Correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is that standard? Is that the norm for what you would say for the average, maybe throughout Maryland, or however?
I would say we are probably maybe two to three weeks longer right now with that.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your being forthright about that. That being said, too, I guess the good question would be, how are we coming along as far as your employment is concerned? Because I know we were talking about bringing new people in. I think you had some prospects. I was curious as to how successful we've been.
Fairly honest.
Right.
We had a candidate that was extremely interested in coming, and we were excited. We'd already got him a place, polished everything up and everything for him, and he had to turn us down. He can't afford to live here on the salary.
So, do we address this problem on a local level or on a state level? I'm assuming it has to be a state level, right?
It is. And the health officers just submitted their report to, on the joint chairman's report. The state had to provide information as to what classifications need a bump-up in salary, and environmental specialist was one of those. We also asked them to look at hiring bonuses, as well as some type of retention. But this is just a report that was required through the joint chairman's report, but it is identified. And as we spoke about last time, we, being the health officers and the environmental health directors, have asked for an annual salary review in which they look at salaries across the state, as well as comparable positions in the community, and possibly will increase the salary. That's also on the agenda for the Maryland Department of Health Secretary and Maryland Department of the Environment Secretary meeting in November, is salary issues.
So, you're actually funding, your funding comes from MDH or MDE? NDH?
No. The PENS, the positions are in the, are in the state system. The county budget funds those positions as part of the core match. So, the county budget is funding them. But just because the county's funding them does not mean I can increase the salary to those positions because that is dictated by the state.
So, would it help for the Acton County Executive, maybe together with the county council, to send a letter? Because since we're paying the bill, would it not be, benefit everyone for us to send a letter to appeal to either, you said, what's it called, PIP? PPI or something? What did you say that was?
Oh, it was PEN, Personal Identification.
Okay. To whomever is, controls all that. Would that be to the state, period?
Yes. It would be very beneficial, and I think it would be beneficial if it came from the Acton County Executive and the county council. And I would suggest it go to the Secretary of Health because that is the division that we fall under. We, our positions fall under the Secretary of Health, even though we are delegated responsibility from Maryland Department of the Environment.
Yeah. Ask me how simple this is. Well, then, I think I would suggest that we, you know, go that route. I mean, we are coming up on a budget season, even though, I don't know if six months away may be too late. I don't know if there's any type of more immediate procedures that we can take that would help you. I would strongly ask that you work with County Executive John Posada, because it is a high priority for this council and the county as a whole. It has been for years. We'd love to see what your proposals might be, if even we're transferring funding from reserves or something to that effect.
I saw Ms. Hurley writing something. Were you taking notes on this?
Yeah, I did.
She always takes notes.
I drafted the letter, so I figured I'd...
I just made a quick note, because I knew I would see the letters.
Right.
So, but we have to recognize the fact that the funding would be, you know, okay with the executive branch as well, and certainly put it in for next year.
If I may, and I have not discussed this with the Acton County Executive, I do apologize for that. In other jurisdictions, the county realizes that there is a pay-in equity with the private sector, and they provide supplemental funding for the positions in environmental health. So, that could be a possibility of a faster fix if we could possibly look into that, and I will further discuss that with him.
Mr. Hastings, let me ask this before you, you might go off track, and it's related. The candidate, what kind of salary was he asking for? Can we ask that? Obviously, he was interested, or he wouldn't have met with you.
The salary we offer starts at 38, about 38,000. Now, it's a college graduate.
38,000?
Yeah, college graduate with a degree in the sciences, and...
That's embarrassing.
It's a one-year training period, and he's required at his own expense to obtain his license. There's a $200 licensing fee.
Sure. Mr. Hastings?
I was just gonna say, the, with the graphs that you sent, put together, the types of applications, the BRF building, land evaluation, you know, the tank-only replacement, obviously, the replacement is what stands out the most. We have two concurrent goals, right? Not just to hook up as many failing septic systems as possible, but, pardon me, not just to address those, or to put in a better septic system with best available technology or whatever, but we also have the other goal of, obviously, lowering the amount of nitrogen phosphorus in our soils. We have the TMDL. We have to meet our obligations for our local water supplementation plan. So, how, and I'll say the last things, a point that I always make is that the amount of citizens in my district, which most people would think you're in the middle of the city of Salisbury, but you're actually in the county, you're not in the city, all the President's Streets areas and a lot of that, you know, the amount of times I've heard of them say they want to be in the city, they just don't know how to go about the process. I say this before, we really need a effort to bring together those two groups, because many of them are now hitting the same situation that they're finding out, they're going to sell their house, and they're finding out it's gonna cost $30,000 to fix this. It'd be easier if I just had a call share and went in with the city of Salisbury, which is what they've been wanting to do. So, we somehow need, and not just the city of Salisbury, but among all our municipalities, we somehow need to have a program or some sort of concerted effort to bring together, to reach out to the individuals who are currently within the municipal area, or reach, but are specifically, that are county properties, and then to ask, "Hey, do you wanna be a part of this municipality?" Because I think it's 25% of it, 75% of the street. I don't remember the exact understanding, but one way or another, there's a lot of folks who want to be hooked up and be a part of the municipalities. And that can not only be helpful in this situation and putting less staff time there, but also it could be helpful for, you know, for advancing water quality goals.
As long as they don't have to pay their city taxes.
They don't mind. They will go out of their way to pay city taxes.
And I think that will be a part of the Water and Sewer Master Plan moving forward.
They're smiling behind you. You can't tell, behind the mask.
I'm very excited about this. This is, yeah.
Mr. Holloway?
Yeah. On the page, January 21 to August 21, at the top of the page, or at the bottom of the page also, you have the building, land evaluation, new construction, replacement tanks only. I know in a lot of cases, people put in just drain fields. I didn't see you list those here as some...
That falls under the replacement.
Replacements.
Counts as, even though it wasn't a tank, it was a drain field, too.
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
Sometimes that replacement can be the whole system. It'd be the tank and the drain field, you know, the complete system, as opposed to a tank only.
Okay. So, I asked this question of Mrs. Brewster sometime. You have interaction with installers about how to repair an existing drain field. We have situations, you know, where they won't let them put in new, new systems at all. So, some of the installers say we can dig out what's there, completely backfill, and I was told that's against the law, or against the rules, right? So, how do you change those?
Change the law?
Yeah. I mean, what do you, you know, if it can be proven that it's beneficial, I mean, do we go through the delegation? Do we go?
You would have to go through the General Assembly, and in the General Assembly, someone would have to introduce a bill that would amend the regulations, or actually the law, to allow for, you know, rehabilitation. Yes, when I first started out in environmental health, which was in 1974, we did rehabs all the time. And, but over the years, we found that the rehabilitations just didn't last. We might get six months, eight months out of them, but we wouldn't get that 10 to 15 years that we were trying to achieve. And so, I forget, it was in the 80s, around 1985, when they decided to, no more. We can't rehab the old ones like that.
So, they won't let it, okay.
I mean, you could certainly go to the delegation.
Hear that, Carl?
Good question, Mr. Holloway. And Ms. Holloway anymore?
I'm fine, thank you.
Mr. Hastings?
Thank you anyway, for that, of course.
I was just gonna add on to what Mr. Holloway was saying, that, you know, the, we did have, a couple of years ago, the University of Maryland Environmental Finance Center was doing, they were funding research for, for septic systems to try to figure out what's the best way to do nutrient uptake, and I would love to see a second round of that. But they were talking about putting switchgrass or other kind of grasses over top of drain fields and be able to pull up more nutrients. You know, there just hasn't really been advanced at the state level, and maybe it hasn't been the appetite because there just hasn't been the research. But we've got, you know, we've got some good research institutions in and around us. It'd be nice to be able, maybe that's something we could do to find more options or more available options. But that being said, of course, sewer and, and public sewer and water is where the future is.
All right. Any more questions, comments? Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
It's happening really quick.
Are you gonna be able to operate this where it's facing? You got a remote? Got it. Good. Yeah.
I didn't know if Councilwoman Ackley, no?
You can start. I thought we were waiting on the computer.
I know you wouldn't do it.
All right. We would introduce yourselves.
John Posada, Acton County Executive for Wycomico County.
Peter Bozick with George Mosson-Bier, engineer.
Catherine McAllister with George Mosson-Bier, engineer.
Thank you very much.
It's an honor to present to you and the public the Wycomico County Water and Sewer Master Plan and its implementation plan. The purpose of this plan is to provide central water and sewer infrastructure to county residences and address the longstanding public health and environmental degradation issues associated with existing failing onsite septic disposal systems. The Water and Sewer Master Plan represents a long-range strategic vision and action plan for the county to provide public water and sewer utility services to promote quality of life, environmental protection, and economic enhancement for its citizens residing outside municipalities in accordance with the county's comprehensive plan. The Wycomico County Water and Sewer Master Plan was a major undertaking and contains many details, facts, and figures pertaining to housing growth and projections, existing nutrient loadings to the bay watershed, and proposes the creation of 10 county-sponsored water and/or sewer service districts. It ties together the water resource elements of not only the county comprehensive plan, but also attempts to facilitate and complement the growth elements of the municipalities contained within their individual comprehensive plans. An executive summary has been prepared and is included for a quick snapshot review of the master plan. I wish to thank the staff at GMB for their diligent, thorough, comprehensive work on this study. I also want to thank the representatives from all the cities and towns who participated in this study, to include the town of Sharp Town, the town of Mardella, the town of Hebron, the town of Delmar, the city of Salisbury, the city of Fruitland, the town of Pittsfield, and the town of Willers. Additionally, I want to thank executive staff and departments to include the planning and zoning, planning and zoning and community development, including the Technical Services Division, Public Works to include our civil engineers. I also wish to thank the Wycomico County Health Department for their assistance. Now, I'd like to introduce Pete Bozick, Executive Vice President for GMB, who will lead us through a PowerPoint presentation to provide a more comprehensive look at the plan for your and the public's benefit. Thank you.
Thank you, John, and thank you, council, for the opportunity to be here. Thank you for allowing us to undertake this study. Thank you for your patience and the time it took to undertake this study, and thank you for your willingness to sit back while we were crunching the numbers and not, and not get intertwined with the work that we were doing. This presentation is hopefully gonna be around 20 minutes, and the way it's set up with this PowerPoint, it's one where I would like to go through the entire presentation before you have any, before any questions are raised. Hopefully, I'm sure many questions will pop into your mind, but hopefully, somewhere along this presentation, you might resolve some of those questions with the rest of the presentation and...
So, hopefully, we can take notes and ask you at the end?
Yes. Yes, yes, yes. Now, this is, on the one hand, this is a high-level, a high-level presentation. It doesn't get into the meat and bones and details of this report, but on the one hand, it's a high level. On the other hand, there's a lot here that just cuts to the bottom line. We're gonna go straight, you know, straight to the bottom line. We are gonna tell you the project areas. We are gonna tell you the construction costs. We're gonna tell you the number of users and the expected monthly cost, and we're gonna go from, and then lastly, part of it, which is really important, is when we talk about the implementation, the next steps, and the roles of all the people within the county, and we'll get into that, you know, towards the end of this presentation. So, all right, so next, you know, so right now, I'm just gonna hit you with the who, what, where, when, and why. Okay, so who is, come on, man. Come on. Nope.
Battery's dead.
No, the batteries should not be dead.
The pointer's working.
Yeah, the pointer is working, so I don't think the battery's dead. The pointer, okay. There it is. It's right there, so maybe I need to point in that direction. So, when I say who, and I say Wycomico County Government, breaking that down, that's not just the county council. The county council is part of county government, obviously, and you have an important role, legislative role, but it also includes the county executive's office. This also includes county planning and zoning. They have a strong role in this. It also includes the engineers in the Public Works Department. So, there's a comp and the GIS group. So, there's a whole grouping of county government involved in this master plan. And the what, in this case, the what is the public, public water sewer utility services, and this is central water and sewer utility services. It gets at specifically what Councilman Hastings was saying. This is not, it gives a lot of detail on why continued reliance on onsite septic systems, continued efforts to try to replace and repair septic systems is not the selected answer in this Wycomico Water and Sewer Master Plan. It is focused on central water and sewer, primarily sewer, secondarily water. And when, obviously, and this is, should be no surprise, as soon as practical, and once this master plan is approved and we're on the course to implement this master plan, we do so with a sense of urgency throughout. And where, so here they are. Here are the five project priority areas that we've identified where we're asking, recommending to the county council to implement central sewer systems and, in a few cases, central water systems as well. One is Mardella Springs. Assist the town of Mardella Springs and areas, nearby areas surrounding the town with central water, with central sewer and water. We're talking about Whitehaven Village, talking about Parsonsburg Village, and by that, in geography, it's the location in downtown Parsonsburg extending along Old Ocean City Road in the west direction to the intersection of Walston Switch Drive and Old Ocean City Road and nearby communities or subdivisions such as Sierra Manor. We're talking about the Nanicoque Bybouth Tyasken, that rural village is down there, central sewer system that ties all three together. There's about 600 houses there that would be affected by that system, and that's another what we're calling a rural villages. A village is defined in the, in the county's com- You can start. I thought we were waiting on the computer.
I didn't know if Councilwoman Ackley...
You can start. I thought we were waiting on the computer.
I didn't know if Councilwoman Ackley...
You can start. I thought we were waiting on the computer.
I didn't know if Councilwoman Ackley...
You can start. I thought we were waiting on the computer.
I didn't know if Councilwoman Ackley...
You can start. I thought we were waiting on the computer.
I didn't know if Councilwoman Ackley...
You can start. I thought we were waiting on the computer.
I didn't know if Councilwoman Ackley...
You can start. I thought we were waiting on the computer.
I didn't know if Councilwoman Ackley...
You can start. I thought we were waiting on the computer.
I didn't know if Councilwoman Ackley...
You can start. I thought we were waiting on the computer.
I didn't know if Councilwoman Ackley...
You can start. I thought we were waiting on the computer.
I didn't know if Councilwoman Ackley...
You can start. I thought we were waiting on the computer.
I didn't know if Councilwoman Ackley...
You can start. I thought we were waiting on the computer.
I didn't know if Councilwoman Ackley...
You can start. I thought we were waiting on the computer.
I didn't know if Councilwoman Ackley...
You can start. I thought we were waiting on the computer.
I didn't know if Councilwoman Ackley...
You can start. I thought we were waiting on the computer.
I didn't know if Councilwoman Ackley...
You can start. I thought we were waiting on the computer.
I didn't know if Councilwoman Ackley...
You can start. I thought we were waiting on the computer.
I didn't know if Councilwoman Ackley...
You can start. I thought we were waiting on the computer.
I didn't know if Councilwoman Ackley...
You can start. I thought we were waiting on the computer.
For the county to go in and establish a district because there's nobody there to use it. But if this remains in the county comprehensive plan as a town transition zone and development does occur, that infrastructure would be built by developers, not from the county council. The master plan and its goals and objectives and as an ongoing plan, it's set up that that infrastructure, when it's built, gets turned over to the county. The county takes over ownership, operation, and maintenance. But likewise, the second area that fits in that category was an area we call East Wycomico. And this East Wycomico area right here is the land between Pittsfield and Willards. You know, it's been noted in the comprehensive plan where it's a potential growth area. They wanted developers to put in central sewers, and it was envisioned that that the developments in that area, they might get annexed to Pittsfield, they might get annexed to Willards. But it's similar to east, to the East Delmar area, is that there are not enough houses there right now where the county does not have to worry about or should not go in there and build sewers because there's nobody there to use it and pay for it. But in the future, the growth directed in that area, they will need to build the infrastructure. And the guidelines of this master sewer plan is that the county will take over ownership and operation. There are reasons when we talk to Pittsfield, and when we talk to Willards, there's a number of variables that go on in terms of the capacity of their plants to actually even take sewage from these areas, the condition of their plants, the amount of discharge they're allowed by the state of Maryland. So there's limitations to how much sewer they can treat and actually discharge. So there's a variety of factors there. But so, so the bottom line is there's 10 potential water and sewer county utility districts. And what we are recommending in this report was five of them, and I've listed the five before. So when we, so we got down to the five, these five districts, and we applied what we call our purpose statement or our mission. A lot of effort was done in this, and where it gets kind of detailed or complicated is so many, whoa. All right. The highlight of this table is it's pretty busy, but the concept I want you to recognize is the three ovals right here. And these three ovals represent three competing factors, let's say. You have your water and sewer infrastructure, which is the technological component, it's the engineering component. It's what I can tell you or what I can tell you what's the best technology, what types of utility, what type of buried pipes, treatment to go with. Another very important part is what we call the governing entity. There's chapter five in this report specifically on management and government, and this is an important part that probably would justify another meeting with the council council to get into more detail on the governing entity. The bottom line that we recommended here is we recommend the county create a water division underneath the public works department to begin the process to handle, to handle water and sewer utility infrastructure. So in other words, the county, you have to create a governmental unit within the county government to carry forward with this. And what you, what you want to learn a little bit more about, I think is helpful, is to understand why we're not recommending that you privatize and go out to private company, why we're not recommending that you create a regional authority or sewer authority, and or why we're at this point not recommending that you create a water department that's on par with the police sheriff's department or the board. And that may sound like a stretch, like how would a water division anyway compare with the sheriff's department or anyway compare with the board of education? Well, we'll show you later on, the magnitude of what you're building and undertaking is we're talking about $200 million of infrastructure, which is only going to increase in value. So at some point, that unit of government within the county is managing multiple hundreds of millions of dollars of infrastructure, and it may deserve a department. Now, the financial management part, and I often refer to just the pocketbook issues. It crosses a lot of boundaries and obviously, whoops, you know, it's the grant funding and it's the bottom line user costs, it's borrowing, financing, it's all those factors. And this master plan, the whole effort in this master plan is always trying to get into what I called, whoops, the sweet spot, the middle part right there where that laser pointer is, that's what we're shooting for. You want to marry up the technology, the managing entity, and the finances to get the most overlap in all those. So that's what we're shooting for. So all the, because you can, all the recommendations we have in here was with the goal of trying to get the best. You'll be able to pick apart some of the issues we have with technology or management or finances, but ultimately what we're trying to accomplish is the best balance. Okay, so what's our recommendations? So we're recommending with this master plan that the incorporated cities and towns through their comprehensive plans have flexibility for them to expand their infrastructure within their municipal comprehensive plan and develop, or if they, which means is to extend their sewers and serve a number of these failing onsite disposal systems that are in close proximity. And this master plan identified approximately 6,000 onsite septic disposal systems that we think are best served through municipals, municipalities. The second recommendation is for the county council then to go through, to begin the legislative processes in order to provide water and sewer infrastructure to these five districts. And when I talk about legislative processes, what I'm talking about is passing amendments to the water sewer comprehensive plan, talking about passing amendments to the Maryland, to the priority funding area maps so that, and get state approval that these areas are subject to priority funding, Maryland state funding. Follow on that, there's some tier maps that have to be done, that have to be amended, tweaked a little bit, nothing major, but to be in line with the Maryland Department of Planning. So this is the, this is the numbers we come up with, some of the details. So what we're looking at, the county to take initiative, to start the process, to implement these, these five service districts. Each one will sort of take on a life of its own in terms of timing and funding and getting built and operated, become operational. These are not necessarily in priority order as we go through the different legislative processes and find out where we stand with, with funding and some of the technical issues about where the disposal goes. Some of these will be easier and quicker to implement than others. When it comes time to establishing actually service district boundaries and getting those approved, some of these will take longer than others. But so of these five systems, whoops, I keep hitting the wrong one, we have a table over, a line over here and column that says initial users. So this column here shows you how many customers we're looking at collecting. In the Mardella Springs area, it's 322. In Whitehaven, we've identified 36 houses, you know, and you go right down the list. In total, it's about 2,500 houses or houses we're talking about the county serving with, with a sewer utility system. And for those 225,000, 2,500 houses, you look at the numbers here, in total, they're mind numbing, I know, they're daunting, but they always have been, they always have been. And I go back to 1974 with Dan Williams, when I started in this business from my side of the table, and it's no, it's, it's, these are no more daunting today than they were 50 years ago. But you'll look right next to that, we have assumed grant. These things are funded primarily, or the major portion is with grants. And what this means is that the state governments and federal governments, they provide incentives, and their incentives are based partially on public health concerns. Their incentives are based on environmental protection concerns. And lastly, there's programs that spur economic development. They don't want to sink everybody by putting sewers in. So those are the sources that we need to tap for funding. And as you see here, you know, we've made some assumptions of 70%, 80% down here at 50%, where we hopefully can get grant money. And in so doing, it gets our monthly cost, as you can see here, it's in the general range of approaching $100 a month, a little bit more, a little bit less. Thank you, Laura, for making a correction in the table. That's in the executive summary. For Mardella Springs, it is, it is $92 a month, not 96. That will be corrected in the report. But like I say, in total, you know, this is over $200 million of capital infrastructure, you know, with all efforts made on the financial side to bring grants into the occasion, you know, this suggests we could get that down to 80 million that has to be paid for, you know, through, through loans or bond funds. And that's, that's, these are based on many assumptions. So now we get to the how. So from the how of this is, we've got, it's a, it's a three-part effort. We've got a management component, a financial component, a technological component. On the management side, it affects right now county council, it also affects the county executive office, it also affects planning and zoning. But we're seeking to start, get this master plan approved. When we say pass enabling legislation, we're talking about getting planning and zoning to present to you amendments to the county water and sewer plan for each of these individual districts. You may approve, you may disapprove those, you may modify those, but that's a step that needs to be taken. Get these eligible for priority funding from the state of Maryland, and, and then be thinking about creating and funding a water division within county government. The financial side is applying for the, for the grants and loan funds, MDE, state, and they also control a fair amount of EPA funding, federal funding comes through the state of Maryland. USDA is a federal funding source. Some of their money is guided by economic principles, a lot of their money is guided by public health principles. Then we have identified the ARPA, which is American Rescue Plan Act. A lot of their funding is guided by economic development principles. On the technological side, and this, this gets lost in the weeds a lot of times, but it's highly technical is, and it could affect everything, is the challenge is going to be getting approval from the state and the environmental community to have safe locations to discharge the treated wastewater that we're collecting. Some of it's going into rivers, some of it's going on ground, but we have to go through that process. Step one, the step two is to take it to the next far, step further, prioritize the projects, begin staffing your water division, and go into the process of creating sewer districts, service districts, where we actually present them preliminary costs, and you may or may not have to go through referendums. You may have to go for referendums on every single one of these, these sewer districts. And then lastly, you know, you begin the process of execution, you know, and that management function falls a lot on the county executive's office to do that, but there's also a legislative component in terms of adopting a rate system policy under management. So the required actions by the county council, first and foremost, we're saying, you know, approve this, this master water and sewer plan as soon as practical, make amendments to the water sewer comprehensive plan, make revisions to the priority funding area so that you're eligible for state funding and we can receive grants. You know, somewhere along the line, vote to officially create this unit of government within the county government to have a water division, revisit, revise tier maps, you know, approve the utility management structure that the county executive needs to carry out. And we're suggesting here that it's going to be a water division under the Department of Public Works. And this prove funding and budget for a water division, starting in fiscal year 2023, which starts next July, which means we envision that the county council will be deep into budgeting discussions in February, March, and April on, on, on what this means and how much, and where the money's going to come from, and what you're going to have to do. And, and then lastly, with that in place, you turn over authority to the county executive for his role in the implementation of the parts that he's responsible for and accountable for. And, and that's, that's what we got. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. I saw some people writing, do we have any questions from Mr. Bozick? Mr. Holloway?
Couple, couple things. I noticed a lot of emphasis on Mardella, and I know back in the 70s and 80s or whatever, I guess it was federal government and the state stepped in to basically require Pittsfield and Willards to.
Heveron too.
Heveron too, to, what is it called?
Install central water sewer.
Yeah, they had to do charters and form a town. How come Mardella's never had to do that?
I'm not exactly sure how they were not part of that initiative at the time. I am familiar with that was under the septic, failing septic system laws and programs in effect at the state of Maryland. It was shortly after EPA was created, Maryland piggybacked on EPA, and it was their intent to provide central sewers in these small towns under the failing septic system program. So where they identified these towns had a certain high percentage of failing septic systems, the state in essence ordered these towns to put in central sewers to correct a public health problem and to correct a pollution problem. The carrot that the state of Maryland had with help from EPA is that they would pay for 87.5% of all quote eligible costs. So their feeling was they were bringing that amount of money to the table, and they forced the towns to, to go ahead and implement that, and that's what the towns did.
So did you think the state didn't see the need for Mardella to do it?
I'm not too sure whether the failing septics were as severe in Mardella or not. I, I just don't know. I mean, maybe you go records for the health department, you can find out where that stood.
Well, I know it's on the top of your list, so.
Yeah, it's the one remaining out there. You know, it's an older community, the houses are older, the septic tanks are aging, the lots are small. We know that Mardella's tried a couple times throughout the years to install, you know, to get their things together. They've got some funding from USDA, and they put the, the cost estimates together, and they looked at it and said, you know, they couldn't afford it, we just couldn't get enough traction. But I will have you remember, every one of these towns, the town of Willard said they couldn't afford it, town of Pittsfield said they couldn't afford it. This has been going on decade after decade after decade.
Well, I guess my question here would, if, if we went through the motions to, to do this and put a system in here, and then they incorporated, would Wycomico County lose the authority over it?
The way we see it, town of Mardella is incorporated. They have a town council, they have a charter, you know, they can vote. Now, we are with this master plan, it's the county government coming to them saying, look, we're coming to try to help you town put in a system. And the reason we're going to help you town put in the system because we as the county want to also serve Athel Road and some of the neighborhoods around the town. We also want to serve Mardella High School and Elementary School.
So this is going to be a collaborative effort?
It's going to be a collaborative effort.
Between Mardella and the county.
Right. At this point, the town has not taken an official position whether they're going to accept the county's help or oppose the county. But this is the starting point with this master plan, and we think it's a good plan. We don't think that it'll be too challenging for the town to do it on their own. Now, if we are able to then incorporate the high school, the benefit to the county, I'm getting into details now, but is that that you have a treatment plant, you have a surface water discharge permit. So we have a basis and a loading going into the Nanacoque River watershed of which to use a discharge permit. So in some senses, it seems easier to create this district and make it happen, and ultimately to try to make it a win-win for everybody. And this particular location is where we think, and the costs aren't shown there, but we'll probably need to install a central water system. And what, and what's going to happen is that these towns, because they're incorporated towns, because they have planning and zoning, once the system's in place, the town's going to have some say in terms of what they approve in terms of development, whether they allow commercial establishments or stores or businesses or restaurants, which will then have a fairly big impact on the water sewer utility system. But all the other areas outside of Mardella, they put central water sewer system in, there's no mechanisms in any of those areas to putting in restaurants or convenience stores or industry or offices, you know, all that's controlled by county planning and zoning.
So you, you, the area that we have the most concern about right now is the Chesapeake Heights area.
Yes.
But you didn't have that in your, in one of your plans. Does that tend to be serviced by the city of Salisbury?
Yes.
Is that where your ideas are coming from?
That's the idea.
How about Mount Herman Road? I didn't see Mount Herman Road, any of the areas on Mount Herman Road, you know, Gumby Road, Gumby Road area on out, you know, there's a lot of issues out there. I didn't see that addressed at all.
Inside of the bypass along Mount Herman Road, those areas were considered urban sewer areas, and they would be served by the city of Salisbury. Outside of the bypass, and in particular, it's a unique situation where we get to Kilburne and Mount Herman Manor, which is out, you know, in terms of the airport area. Couple interesting facts there. Yes, they do have failing, failing septic systems in those areas. Number two, however, they're not in the growth area for the county comprehensive plan. The county is not looking to expand growth in those areas. Number two is, and we've learned from the experience with putting water, water to the airport, and we had to go through this process with the state to get this qualified as a priority funding area in order to get state funding. And in doing so, the state says, this is a denied access line. So the state actively pursuing planning policies where they don't want to see growth in those areas. And so for that reason, it's not in the comprehensive plan, and for that reason, it's not in the master water and sewer plan as a service district.
I guess my concern wasn't much for growth as it was for the folks that already live there.
An existing problem, solving an existing problem. So in that context, we don't have a specific recommendation in the report right now, but the implementation of this plan, when we talk about an ongoing path forward, and when the county has these resources with a water sewer department, I think that's the time you can go back and reassess and figure out whether US the county can go in there and just serve that area. You know, one of your solutions in that area in this context might be that every single house in that area gets an advanced treatment unit. That's not as desirable as central sewers because it doesn't get the nutrient load down as, as, as much, but maybe in the long run, in terms of the capital cost and the cost of ongoing operation and maintenance, maybe that's the solution. But that type of a problem area, from a public health and environmental point of view, hopefully can get readdressed with the implementation of this plan.
One more.
One more.
You, you went from Parsonsburg to Walston Switch Road, and you say everything out to the bypass or anything inside the bypass is a growth area. So anything from the bypass to the Walston Switch area, you've left out, which is highly, it's pretty dense in there, so, and there's a lot of issues in there.
Excellent, excellent, excellent observation. Thank you for that question. There is sort of ambiguity in this report regarding that area. It's not clearly defined. Generally, when you look at the city's comprehensive plan, it's beyond the city of Salisbury's comprehensive plan as an annexed area. And they're not allowed to annex any area that's not within their, within their comprehensive plan. At the same token, the city does have sewer to Warwick College, Chop Tank Electric, Tri- County Council Building, they connect Beaver Run School, so the city of Salisbury has infrastructure. So it's a, it's a unique combination where you have some city infrastructure, but you don't have any sense of whether the city wants to serve those areas or where the county's going to serve those areas. What we're saying from the engineering, the best technical solution is not to have duplicate, overlap or duplication of services, that one or the other. Now, in theory, you could say the county can go ahead and just pick up all those areas, but a limitation in that regard is that if you pick up that load and that wastewater, you may not have a place, and once you treat it, you may not have a place to discharge it. What we are looking right now, what you're looking at in that Parsonsville Village, you know, you're looking at the watershed that flows to the Wycomico River. We're not looking at the watershed that flows to the Pokamook River. And that means we have some creeks and streams such as Beaver Dam Creek, and I think there's a Holloway Creek in those areas, you know, and those are potential discharge locations. And that treated wastewater will then, you know, flow in the direction of the Wycomico County through the city of Salisbury. So it's a good point that you make, it's an excellent point, it's an excellent trouble area. When we decide to try to implement the Parsonsburg Village system and we go to, to Walston Switch Road, yeah, that question needs to come up because if it now's the time to keep going closer to the bypass, we keep going. The technical, the, the, the ability to get a discharge permit may ultimately be the straw that, or the divide, you know, the, the line in the sand on how far we can go. There may be some things happening on the city side that may lean in that direction.
I would like to maybe suggest that we hold a work session if, if everyone would be available in two weeks.
That's exactly what I was going to say. We got, we got a meeting with the Board of Ed coming up in 15 minutes. We haven't had lunch, and we've got a lot of work to do. There's 286 pages on this draft, and I think if everybody's agreeable, I'd like to see us have another work session. Hold your questions until then. Can we work out a date?
I would suggest it be the only work session.
Just a separate day for that?
Just one separate work session. I'd like to discuss this management.
Or the one for that day of the council?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Or it's a special meeting for a work session, correct?
Well, I mean, we could have a legislative meeting and then just dedicate the rest of the time to a work session.
Be the work session for water and sewer. So if you don't have anything else, I want to thank you all. I, I, we've got a lot of praise for you, and we can do that at the next work session. So thank you all, and I look forward to seeing you again.
I guess the question would be, it would probably need to be a 10 o'clock meeting, right?
Would it be better at the day or night meeting for you guys?
Day.
Day.
Day meeting for real?
Sure.
Okay, we'll work something out. So thank you. We got the board coming in in 15 minutes, so we need to take a recess. So 15 minutes. If y'all would kindly introduce yourselves for the record.
Hey, I'm Gene Malone. I'm chairman of the school board. I have with me vice chairman, Mr. Michael Murray, board member, Mr. John Palmer, board member, Mrs. Ann Suthausky. I'll let Donna introduce the staff if you want.
Okay, Donna Hanlon, superintendent.
Micah Stauffer, chief finance and operations officer.
And also behind me, I believe, we have Mrs. Kim Miles, assistant superintendent for student and family services, and Dr. Rick Briggs, chief academic officer.
Welcome, everyone.
Thank you.
Would you like to start?
So we have the agenda in front of you.
I'm looking at it, yes.
Which were your agenda items. So we will go down and address these the best that we can based on what was, what was provided to us. We wanted an update on Kerwin and the AIB, the Accountability and Implementation Board associated with the, the blueprint. So I'm going to ask Micah, who, as you know, is our coordinator, among many other things.
Yes.
Right. Update on Accountability and Implementation Board. We've been, we've had one meeting of blueprint coordinators across the state, and then we've also been getting some updates in our CFO meetings on a bi-monthly basis. As far as the Accountability and Implementation Board, or AIB as it's called, they're going to be responsible for the implementation and evaluation of outcomes under the blueprint for Maryland's future. The AIB has very broad oversight of funding and accountability, including the ability to withhold funding based on the implementation of the blueprint elements as well as student performance. The status for the AIB currently, the nominating committee at The status for the AIB currently, the nominating committee at the state level has selected nine individuals to move on to the governor, for him to appoint seven of them currently. The legislation requires the governor to make his selection by October 1st. Last week, he has since expressed his concern in writing, because eight of the nine nominees are from Montgomery County, Baltimore County, or Baltimore City. And one is from Anna Rundle. Governor Hogan has asked the nominating committee to resend him nine names by September 27th that are more representative of Maryland, both demographically and geographically. So that's currently where we are with the AIB.
Have we nominated anyone from the eastern shore?
I'm not aware.
Okay.
So maybe the reason for those individuals is because no one in the other areas.
Was it in Florida?
Yeah, applied.
I don't recall seeing a full list of the nominees, only those who made it to the level. So I don't know whether anyone was nominated.
Were there any particular requirements of the people who were appointed, from what you could tell?
I'm not sure. I know they did send out a posting for those that were interested in applying to be considered, but I'm not sure of the requirements of that posting.
Could you forward that to us? So if they're still accepting nominations, we can send it.
Did that answer everyone's questions? Okay.
Are we still talking about Kerwin?
Yeah.
Were there any changes as far as the COVID and everything that were, moved the deadlines and the obligations and the, and the costs forward at all?
So I was going to just briefly talk about just Kerwin and blueprint in general for, for a couple of minutes. The blueprint implementation plans after the AIB is selected, what their first job is, is to create a comprehensive implementation plan for Maryland by February 15th. And at that point, MSD shall develop the guidelines or criteria for the approval of all of the local county plans by the local boards of ed, and that has to be done by April 1st. And at that point, those plans would go to MSD for review and recommendation of approval by June 15th of this coming year, 2022, and the AIB would have ultimately the approval of those plans. When we're talking about the funding, the AIB does have the, the authority to withhold funding if plans have not been approved by the timeline that they set forth. So that, that's one thing that has occurred. As far as the funding accountability itself, as I said, 25% of the increase in the state share of the blueprint funding for each fiscal year is going to be withheld from school systems. That amount in '23 through '25 will hinge on those planning approvals, and then beyond '25, it'll hinge on the student performance data itself. So that's one thing that they have in place for accountability regarding the funding. As far as the other pieces of it, early childhood education, the education career ladder, we can talk a little bit about that briefly. Early childhood education, that's going to be an expansion of full-day pre-K kindergarten, and we've already been moving in that direction, so we look really good. In Wycomico right now, we're going to be working with the local private daycares as well. That's a part of the stipulation under blueprint. The career ladder, the county boards of education must implement a career ladder by July 1st, 2024, and that career ladder is subject to, of course, negotiations and bargaining under that, that law. Between 2019 and 2024, the salary scale for teachers must increase by 10%. And then effective July 1st, 2026, the starting teacher's salary must be at least $60,000 at that point. In addition, the career ladder has to also define compensation for certificated teachers, masters, degrees, national board certifications, different levels for administrators with education certifications as well. So those are all things that have to be done in the next few years under blueprint as well. We also are working diligently at this point in time for college and career readiness, and that's been a focus of our county for several years now under Dr. Hanlon's leadership. So again, we are sitting good with that, but we have to have pathways in place for career readiness, as well as AP courses, early college and dual enrollment, and CTE. So we know that those are all things that, within our county, we, we prioritize to begin with.
Any more questions? Still on Kerwin. All right, moving on.
Okay. So our next item is school enrollment and attendance, and we weren't exactly sure what you were looking for, but we thought we'd give you a little bit of information on where we are right now. As you know, Kim, if you want to come up while I'm, our official enrollment is not, it's not official until after September 30th. So, but we're keeping a very close eye on it, and pleased that we're seeing a bounce back in enrollment, especially in the primary grades.
Welcome, Ms. Miles.
Ms. Miles, there were specific questions that we had last time. I can't recall exactly what the questions were, but you were going to get back to us.
She's got to introduce herself first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Kim Miles, assistant superintendent with student and family services. And Mrs. Ackley, I'm sorry, what were you asking?
There were specific questions we had on attendance, and how many students we had enrolled, and you were going to get back to us from the last meeting. I don't recall what those questions were.
Don't recall that, Mrs. Ackley.
I don't recall with specifics, but I'd be glad to revisit data if that's what is requested as we move forward. I can tell you.
How many kids we had lost to the private school system.
We would know withdrawals, and I, I think, I'm recalling the conversation. I apologize if I don't recall in the data that is being, or in the manner of specificity that's being requested.
Yeah, I don't remember either.
But I believe there was a question, how many students had, pardon me, transitioned to homeschooling, how many had transitioned to private schools? And we did not have, I did not have at that point in time physically in front of you the disaggregated data. We do know, we can look with our coding in our student database to see how many students are in homeschooling, and how many are transitioned away from us in a, in a year. So I don't, I'm not prepared with that information at this point in time, but certainly it's something that we can look at.
Right.
So I'm clear. We, you want the number of students who transitioned to homeschooling, and if we have it to private schools.
You know what, Dr. Hanlon, I'm going to look back at our last meeting minutes that we had with you, and can I email you that?
Yeah, just.
Okay. Because I just want to make sure that I'm.
Sure. Well.
And I thought at the last meeting that you stated that you found all the students that were lost, and the ones that had transitioned to a private, but did they come back? That's what I thought you said.
We're now looking at, again, as Dr. Hanlon referenced, we won't have the actual September 30, the official information. We do have students currently going in to our schools and leaving our schools, so we continue to monitor that. I think, Mr. Dodd, what you're referencing about the, the students that we weren't sure where they were, we did have some students whose attendance was showing that they were not engaging, and we were able to locate those students. I cannot say that all of them, from the point of location, point in time of location forward, started attending regularly. I would like to be able to say that, but that would not be the case. But we did continue, and if I remember correctly, I shared that we have the school counselors, the student advisors, the pupil personnel workers, and the homeschool liaisons who work as an attendance team to communicate with the family, to find out what needs there may be that are impeding the students' attendance, and to engage all resources available. We do continue that this year. We have increased our number of pupil personnel workers. Those are the, the persons who through COMAR are charged with attendance specifically, as well as continue the roles of our homeschool liaison, student advisors, and our counselors with an emphasis on ensuring the attendance of the students. So it's, it's ongoing and very fine-tuned work that's done to not only identify a student not attending, but to find out what the reasons are behind that, to address those, and if there are supports that can be provided to take away that barrier that may or may not be present, to do that as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any more questions? All right.
You asked about teacher retention.
Sure.
And so I, I think probably the council knows that teacher retention and, and having a high-quality workforce is one of our strategic priorities. So we keep a very close eye on turnover rate, three, or three-year turnover rate, as well as the, the actual goal in the strategic plan is the percentage of first-year teachers that stay with us. Last year was a little bit challenging, or actually in 2020, 2021, which is last year, was probably, we may have lost a few, but our, our goal is basically to stay at about 90%. We're just under that. In 2017, 2018, we were at 89%, and then in 1920, our data show 86%. So it's obviously an important goal to us to have a stable workforce, because, I mean, I think that's probably pretty obvious why that's important, the professional development that's involved, and, and teachers being familiar with our school system, being familiar in the classroom. We hired about 126 new teachers this year.
126?
Yes, which is a little higher than normal. It's usually a little over 100.
Were they replacements, or were they added positions?
They were, there were no added positions unless they are contractual positions or positions that were added through our ESER funds.
Okay.
Or some other grant funding. We did add social workers, for example, with some of, some of that funding.
For mental.
So some of that could, some of those numbers, the 126, could be those additional social workers. So I'm happy to answer any specific questions that you had about teacher retention, but...
Any questions on teacher retention? All right. I don't know who sent you that question, but I guess you answered it. Moving on.
Very good. American Rescue Plan funding, Dr. Stauffer.
Okay. American Rescue Plan funding, or as we call it, ESER III. We have received our initial approval of the grant application, and I would just advertise that the grant application in full is on our homepage of our website. We're awaiting the official notice of grant award at this point in time. We do expect to have that very soon, in the next couple of weeks. Once that funding is received, it has to be spent by September 30th, 2024. Some of the amounts in our budget currently for use of that funding would be 3.4 million in wages for tutoring, home hospital, after-school programs, summer school, and literacy camps. Approximately 2.9 million for student and teacher laptops, as well as for virtual learning, instructional spaces for high schools. 7.7 million in instructional software, and then a little over a million for the creation and development of outdoor classrooms and playground equipment. And then the bulk of that money would be used for our HVAC system updates throughout the county, as well as doors and window replacements throughout the county, and that's approximately 30 million right now that's earmarked for that purpose.
So we should never hear a complaint about air conditioning again?
We hope not. We, we believe that by the end of this funding in 2024, that we will be where we need to be according to our, our CIP and our facility condition assessments. Hopefully, it'll put us very close to that. If, if you remember, in our CIP, we always have those priorities, but then that long list at the back of the book, hopefully this will really help us take care of some of the items on that long list.
Is Wyhite fully air-conditioned, including the auditorium?
Yes.
Good.
It is.
I remember that time it wasn't.
I do as well. Graduated from there.
Well, it wasn't that long ago that I remember.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's good to hear. Can you tell us about those outdoor classrooms?
The outdoor classrooms were just, it was something in the development of that grant application that we saw as a need. It was a reoccurring theme from school to school and administration to administration. So we wanted to do our best to, you know, provide an outdoor learning space that could be utilized throughout, you know, the time, not only for environmental learning, but just as a space that, that students could go to for learning in. And then, of course, much of our playground equipment, some of it is dated, and this will provide us the opportunity to make sure that we replace that with safe and updated equipment.
Good. Any questions?
How do you find implementing, I guess, because there's been some funding for broadband related, it's a broad term, of course. I guess part of that is the laptops that you're talking about, things that, what else is that you're seeing that you're, were able to maybe stay ahead of the things, especially with some students who may still be at home?
A lot of that, that.
Hotspots.
Funding that is included in the technology numbers that I just told you is, some of that is for hotspots, to help the connectivity with students at home.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Sorry.
All right. Then running into your time, did you have a question, Ms. Ackley?
This, you can finish with, with the agenda.
I thought she was.
Okay. I don't know if you were still talking on it or not. I'm just, I'm curious what your, your media policy is. Do you have a social media and a media, media policy?
Do have a, a social media policy as far as teachers participating on social media and so forth, communicating with students that...
So I've noticed on the social media page that they get edited. Wycomico County Public Schools, their social, social media, they post something, and it, and someone posts, I guess, a not, I want to say not so nice, but something that's not in agreements with the picture, they're deleted. Not familiar with that.
You have to ask Mr. Butler about that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then what's your policy, because I'm sure you've all seen it and heard about it in the news, the pictures that were sent to the media from the communications department of parents, and it looks like some of your staff, too.
I'm familiar with a picture that Mr. Butler provided to WBOC, because they asked for a picture, and that was the picture that he had. They asked either the night of the meeting or the morning after, and it's a public meeting, and...
What's it in reference to? I'm not sure what the reference is.
So it was a, a picture of, I was in it, and then there were some citizens in it, and what I got from WBOC was it was released from Wycomico County Public Schools in regard to parents protesting the mask, and that I did not have a mask on during that time. So I was just, yeah.
So it's common practice that the media.
That was the narrative that he submitted.
Pardon me?
That's the narrative that he submitted.
That's the narrative.
I'm not sure if he submitted a narrative.
Yeah, I'm, I'm just familiar.
I know he submitted a picture.
A picture.
So he just.
It's common practice that the media, the, you know, if I do a, a interview, for instance, with Greg Bassett, that we will send pictures to support the media when, in the stories that they're doing. As they have before, they reached out to Paul and asked for a picture from that night, he sent them the picture that he had.
Something with a, typically a negative connotation? I mean.
I don't know about a negative connotation.
And wouldn't you usually send something if it was positive?
What was the negativity? What was the negative inference? I'm not getting any of this.
It was, so it was saying that parents were protesting the mask, they were aggressive. There's a narrative to it.
Right.
On this picture. And he was acting as the communications director in the public school system. WBOC was also there.
So what was the statement, that the parents were on school property and not wearing masks?
Yeah, and that they were, they were doing a protest against.
Right. There was, there was an issue because there, there is now a state requirement that in all public schools and school facilities, that individuals are masked. And we had set up the scenario where we were going to allow for people to come into the meeting and speak in a very structured way, allowing five people at a time based upon the space that we had in the auditorium. Nine people in the lobby, five people rotating out. It was very, very methodical.
We did that up here when we, when we.
Right, right. So what happened apparently was that a crowd came in without masks on and refused to leave. And we had to shut our meeting down because we couldn't open the meeting and have that come in. So that's what the...
Those who were there to talk about other things were denied. So I was not able to go in.
Right, because the meeting had not been opened.
So they didn't open the meeting to anyone. Everyone was denied to go into the meeting.
Because, well, were you denied, period, or were you denied because you weren't wearing masks?
They were denied because they weren't wearing masks.
No, 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 I put my mask on. I put my mask on, and citizens who put their mask on were not allowed to go into the meeting.
Because we couldn't open the meeting.
We couldn't open the meeting at all.
The meeting was not opened.
Right.
But the picture, I thought you said the picture showed everyone not wearing masks.
And that was, that was in the lobby, because we... That was in the lobby, because we never opened the doors to the meeting.
So, the... So, Mr. Butler then came out and asked everyone to put a mask on.
Right.
Which, I wasn't paying attention to people around me, I don't know what they were doing, but I put my mask on, so I could go in and make my public comment. And I and the three other people I was with that had a mask on were denied going in to make a public comment.
I'd hate to surmise... My guess is that it wasn't personal, it was only the fact that it sounds to me like everything got out of control, and rather than allow it to escalate?
Safety.
It was not-
It was. It was about safety.
There was no escalating of it. It was Mr. Butler's narrative of what was happening. But, WBOC was there. I don't understand why W... Why he's submitting these kind of pictures to WBOC with a specific narrative?
I was understood, Mrs. Ackley, that WBOC was not there. Now, I can't tell you that per-
I was in the lobby with them, I saw them there.
Okay.
And I can't say that he delivered the narrative. That, I don't know.
He did not.
I know he sent the picture, but I don't know about the narrative. I can't-
Yeah.
...validate that. I'd have to ask Paul. Just know the picture was sent. All right. Moving on, I think you said 1:30, but I had a question about the 180 days. I know the school year is 180 days, so is that what the mask is?
Calendar days. It's calendar days or until the state-
So, it's 100, including weekends?
Correct.
Okay.
Or they could release it earlier based on transmission rates.
That's an odd number to pick, knowing the school year is 180.
We're going to be reporting data, so if it gets-
Okay.
-in the level of their wheelhouse to release it, they will.
All right. Thank you for coming, and we look forward-
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mine's a lot more mundane than the other questions. I had a citizen send me an email questioning your policy on paying fines for drivers, people that are driving county cars. Is that a practice that you do?
They pay their own fine. It does come through our workflow system if they're in a county vehicle, and our fine, it comes through the workflow system, and then they reimburse the workflow system.
So...
They pay their own fine.
The employee always reimburses. Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you all, and we look forward to-
Thank you.
-the tour of Beaver Run.
Yes.
Thank you.
On the 5th. We have that all set up. Thank you.
So, Ms. Hurley, are we going to do the computers or the discussion on the attorney?
I believe Mr. Mitchell is ready to discuss that, if you-
Sir?
Can wait another five or 10 minutes.
Can I speak to you just a moment?
We got a meeting going on, but, yeah, we're...
Okay.
What's it about?
We... I don't want to speak openly. I thought that you were changing-
No, we have another work session, and then we're doing something with the computers.
I just wanted to-
Can you catch us after the meeting, because this is rolling?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. All right. I got lost in my train of thought.
So, Mr. Mitchell is ready for the next work session?
Okay.
And then, just as a reminder, we do have the IT department-
Correct.
-ready to swap-
Exchange computers.
Yes.
So, Ms. Hurley, you want to start this? I know what the gist of this is. I know you were talking to Mr. Mitchell, or Mr. Mitchell, do you want to respond?
We were both talking about it.
I know it's a legitimate concern.
Did I think it was appropriate to bring it up? And I said, "Yeah, I think it's appropriate." One of the issues that came up when I... During my interview was how would I know what request to... That I'm supposed to respond to? And I have no real problem with it, but it... I don't want it to get out of hand, and then, you know, everybody comes back to me and says, "Well, you shouldn't have been there." I have to know some way to know... I don't mean been there, you know, if I'm... If a request comes in, generally, it hasn't been a big problem, but it could be. When Ms. Hurley and I discussed it, we both agreed that when I brought that up, it was agreed that if it came through her, it was fine, but then there was no real consensus on anything beyond that.
Right. In the past, the council members always contacted the council attorney at their discretion.
Right.
And I understand how you feel uncomfortable now. I think you want one point of contact, if that's what I'm-
My biggest problem is I don't really mind doing it, but I don't... If I'm supposed to be turning down, I'd like to know the criteria, how to decide that.
What do you mean, turning down?
If somebody calls and asks me to research something or do something.
Okay. How's the council feel? Do you want to continue as we're doing? And if you have a question, the contact attorney, or do you want to go through Laura or the president?
We meet every two weeks. I don't know if there would be such an urgency that if a council member has a concern that they couldn't be brought up at the end of the work session and just, you know, making those requests as part of the agenda.
Or just contact-
Any request of legal.
I don't have any issue with anyone just calling him.
What's that?
I have no issue with anyone just calling him if they have a question for him.
I don't either, but he feels uncomfortable about it.
Okay.
Now, it's not so much that. It's like several things have come in pretty close to the next meeting, you know, for me to deal with. The longer I'm here, the more I'm going to have some background, and it's not starting fresh. But, sometimes, an issue comes up that hasn't come up before, and it's starting from ground zero. And I don't always know how intense it's going to be. Some of them I've done, you know, a fair amount of work on, and then the answer is fairly... Not my answer, but the answer in the council is fairly well, you know, taken.
Right. So, how does the council feel, Ms. Hurley?
I did reach out to some other administrators to find out how their counties handled requests for legal services, and it was kind of a mixed bag. It seemed to be if they had an in-house county attorney, then the council members would be able to directly, you know, ask a simple question or have them review something. But, if it was contractual attorney, then it would go through the administrator.
Mm-hmm.
If we can't... If we can't ask our council member... Or, excuse me. If we can't answer our attorney questions and get his opinion on something, why do we have him? I think that we need to have an open book with him. If it's going to be something that's going to take a lot of time, you can assess that pretty easily. Okay, well, I call and ask you if it's sunny or cloudy outside, you can tell me. If it's something you're going to have to look at and, you know, go into some time, I think the ideal situation would be call Laura, or just tell the council member to call Laura. Let's get some approval on this. But, a simple question, I guess there's no simple questions. There have been a few simple questions. There really were. There were some this time. There's been some before, where it's just been a simple email, or, you know, "Do you agree with this?" And I look at it and I email back, "Yes." Those types of things are not a problem. For instance, Laura was requesting information that was supposed to come from the county executive on the premium pay.
On the interim provision.
Yeah. And I had... I contacted her, I guess it was Thursday or Friday, and said, "We still haven't seen that." And that's one of the things I was asked to look at. And we got it about 4:30 on Friday, which created a little scramble there, but we got it done. But, so, I don't have a big... I don't have a problem with fielding questions as they may come in. If it looks like it's something big, as soon as I know that, I guess I would report back to whoever asked me and to Laura.
Well, I think, too, I mean, we're very fortunate, because our administrator is paralegal. And I think it would be best to-
Go through her first.
Go through Laura, because then she'll be able to say... I mean, not often this time I have a question, even if it's legal, Laura knows how to handle it. And if she doesn't, she can defer to Mr. Mitchell.
Unless we don't like the answer, then we call Paul, see if we can get a different one. Right?
But, again, I think that... And that would take the pressure off of Mr. Mitchell to decide how much work to put into it or not to put into it.
Either way, but, John, the point of waiting until the next council meeting, sometimes, I think that could-
Again, I think instead of that, just contact Laura. She's a paralegal, she can help you with-
Right, because you may need that information prior to the meeting. So, I have no problem talking to Laura first. And I don't have any problem if a council member has a short question to ask Mr. Mitchell, but he's going to be charging, so you have to consider that as well.
Another thing we could do, you could email Laura and him at the same time and just put a big question mark behind it and-
Or copy the entire council.
Copy the council, you know.
I like that.
Yeah, that's a good idea. And I would ask that when that happens, if Laura would then let me know if she's looking at it. I've gotten some that are to me, Wilbur, and Laura, and I'm thinking, "Okay, am I... Am I not doing this?"
And there's some situations, if you're talking to Mr. Wilbur, it's probably not the need to ask you the same question.
Well, I talked... I called him about the premium pay.
Yeah.
Because I had gone through the regs and everything, and-
I'm glad you did.
Yeah, he hadn't. And so... But, all he was doing is preparing the bill the way he was asked to do it.
Okay.
And I thought it needed a little more detail. So, I said... And he said, "Yeah, I think you're right." And I apologize. He mentioned Andrew's name.